Welcome everyone to the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Town of Kibbe planning board meeting. You can all hear us out there in Zoom land and please start by joining me for the pledge.
Goodbye of United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. The weather's getting warmer.
So the meeting's getting shorter.
So we'll be out in the light perhaps today. Let's see. All right, first up is a one sixty salt point turnpike for a public hearing.
Hi, Amy von Gury for one sixty salt point.
Amy.
How are you?
All right. And do you have anything to say about this one so far?
So since the last time you saw this, I've been going back and forth with the DOT regarding the entrance on the salt point turnpike. They seem to want us to close it. I'm trying to convince them to leave it open. So that's where we're at. I sent them a letter and I haven't heard back from them, but it's only been not even a week. So I'm waiting on that. So in the event that that does have to be closed, the monument sign would then be moved from where it is shown now at Salt Point entrance to the North Grand entrance. If they do allow us to keep it open, improvements will be made to the curb cut. The curb's kind of deteriorating and the entire site's going to be repaved. So if we can keep it open, it'll be improved. If we can't keep it open, the only work that would be to connect the new sewer lateral in generally the same location it exists. So that would just be a utility permit. And then I'm proposing to put the water connection onto North Grand. That'll have a meter pit accessible off of that entrance on North Grand.
Okay.
I did, I did receive the floodplain development permit today.
All right.
The drainage report has been submitted to Andy Lern and...
All right, we'll see what he says about that later.
Okay. So yeah, so the, uh, the proposed development is still six dwelling units for a total of twelve bedrooms and a little playground area, grilling area in the back, a shed, and nothing like, nothing along those lines have changed since you've last seen it. The reduction in impervious is about twenty percent from what is existing now and the building will just have interior changes and minor exterior facade changes and it'll be repainted.
All right, thanks, Amy. It's good to, good to take an unused building and make some small apartments that are needed into town.
Yeah.
So Eric, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, it's a relatively modest site plan. It's up for the board's seeker review, a rezoning recommendation to the town board, and then it's a public hearing for site plan. The for seeker, whichever way the, since Amy has shown it with the DOT with the North Grand entrance open, I think it's covered any issues related to whether it changes or not. And since it's gonna have to go to the town board before it comes back for possible rezoning, before it comes back to the planning board, it doesn't have any implications for seeker. If the engineer is satisfied with the drainage, that was really the last item remaining for seeker and for that purpose, we prepared a seeker negative declaration for you to consider tonight. As far as the other comments, comment number one just deals with that potential change before they come back. Whichever way the DOT goes on it should be determined and should appear on the site plan when they come back to you. Also, I did talk with Tom Wiedek, the flood, floodplain administrator today, and he indicated he, yes, the permit was issued, but his previous comments to the planning board still apply. So he still wants to see that floodplain, the various floodplain information and treatment of the, uh, treatment of improvements on the site plan according to floodplain requirements.
Okay.
So that, that's something that could also, the permit is there, it won't affect seeker, but it will need to be there for final site plan approval.
All right.
The Department of Health indicated it was ambiguous before, but now they've indicated that it does seem to be, some type of approval does seem to be required from the Department of Health. No practical implication, except that at the end of the process, they will need to approve it. And I did speak with Carol Knapp-Aspin. She was satisfied that, that the plans promised forthcoming details of the next civil and eternal fence, so that is also sufficient for seeker. And she agreed, uh, the plan calls for no tree removal, so there's no issue with potential bat issues.
Yep, she mentioned Blandy's in her memo. All right.
So with that said, I think, um, again, as I said, that there's two courses of actions for you to consider in the recommendation. The number, Roman numeral one is if, if the drainage assessment is not okay, uh, then it may still be something for seeker. Roman numeral two at the bottom of page two would be if the board, if the engineer is comfortable with seeker with drainage, then we think you could go ahead with the seeker determination.
All right, thanks. Eric?
Oh, and that, I just updated in my copy anyway, the, uh, excuse me, the conditions, I updated the Department of Health's comments are now May twelfth. And the building department, the floodplain administrator's comments would be March seventh and May thirteenth.
All right. Thanks. Up to you, Amy. How the, how the floodplain?
Yeah, well, like Eric said, yeah, the floodplain, you know, permit has been issued, but they do have a few items to be addressed. The main issue that we, kind of the threshold issue that we were dealing with last time was the amount of soil disturbance and whether or not a SWIP would be required. So we reviewed it. Amy gave us a little bit more information. We're comfortable that the, the actual area of disturbance is actually only around eight tenths of an acre. So they're well below that, that threshold number that we're looking at. So, so SWIP isn't required and we did review the, um, the drainage analysis and it confirms like we would expect with a twenty percent reduction in impervious cover that the, the flood rates actually are being reduced. So it's a good thing.
Yeah.
So we are, we are comfortable with moving ahead with, with seeker.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah, removing, uh, pavements was a good thing for drainage.
Yes.
All right, it's on for a public hearing. Should I move the, the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, fair enough. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application tonight? Seeing that I move adjourn the public hearing to June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Just wanted to let everyone know that's listening at Zoom that we have two alternate board members filling in as voting members tonight, Michael and, uh, and, uh, I'm here for Rocco and Nicole that are out. So we do have a full board of seven members. Let's go around the board for, for comments on this one. Sid, give any...
Not really sure if this was discussed. I didn't see that anything mentioned it here regarding the parking for the special needs. I, I do see that there are six parking spots, but any provision for the special needs here?
Amy, there should be handicap parking, right, somewhere?
There, yeah, there's four spaces. There's two spaces on the Salt Point Turnpike side and there's two spaces on the North Grand Avenue side. And then those are the two closest spaces to the proposed handicap ramp to get into the front entrance.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I see, I'm near the, kind of near the, the corner there.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Sid. Peter?
Uh, this is a great example of adaptive reuse, particularly since you're providing some rental units. The reduced impervious surface is a, is a real plus. With regard to the application of the town for rezoning, you're adjacent to the NRM district, which is a residential multifamily district, and this, I think, fits very well. So good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Anything?
I got nothing, no.
All right.
Having visited, I'm, as the board has sided with you, I hope you get to keep those two entrances, I think, from an import and output of flow and traffic. It's a great idea. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, we agreed, agreed last meeting that, uh, it was fine to keep the two entrances. It's a small, small traffic flow. Anything?
I have nothing.
Mike?
No comments.
All right, I think we're ready to do.
So this is the one down here. So the planning board...
Did you say I move here?
Oh, I move to adopt a seeker negative declaration as follows. I move that the planning board determine that the proposed one sixty salt point turnpike project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for unlisted action dated May fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five.
Do I have a second for seeker?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero.
This one here. I move that the planning board convey a positive, negative, neutral recommend...
Well, what, yeah, we should decide.
Oh. Okay.
Which, uh...
Take that off.
I think this is a good project. I'd say we convey a positive recommendation. Anybody disagree? All right.
Good.
Go ahead.
I move that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed zoning map amendment to rezone parcel six one, six two dash oh two dash nine five three seven three seven plus...
Plus one is...
Minus two point zero acres from the neighborhood business district to the residence multifamily district.
Second.
Moved and seconded for recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application subject to the following one to eleven.
Second for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded to defer response to, to the comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Good to go, Amy. Get to the town board for your rezoning. Hope that goes well.
Thank you. I just, um, I'm, the process, do I have to request to be put on the town board agenda or does that automatically happen?
Um, why don't we talk tomorrow, Amy? I think we're, um, we're gonna probably be aiming for the first meeting in, um, June at this point to set the public hearing. So I can talk to you about the schedule tomorrow. All right?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good night.
All right, you too. Next up, we have a couple of, uh, just, uh, adjournments. So for the Inwood Avenue townhomes, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Spark Car Wash, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. This time I move we allow public comment on other agenda items on tonight's meeting. Uh, second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on the remaining agenda items tonight? Either in, in the room or on Zoom here, seeing most of the developers. I, I now move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next up is application C one, New York State Distribution Services, nine hundred Duchess Turnpike.
My name is Jessica Zalen. I am with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, LLP, appearing on behalf of the applicant, New York State Distribution Services, Inc., in connection with the applicant's request for amended site plan approval for their proposed manufacturing and distribution operations that'll be conducted within the existing industrial building at nine hundred Duchess Turnpike. I am joined this evening via Zoom by our project engineer, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, and our traffic consultant, Rich D'Andrea, and our odor consultant, Emmett Marzon, both of Colliers Engineering. We understand that the board has some procedural actions that they are going to be considering taking tonight related to seeker, so we are here in case this board has any questions for our team. And with that, uh, we're, we're good, good to go.
Thanks for your input. And Kristen?
Yeah, thank you. It's, um, so just as a matter of record, we did close the public hearing at the prior, applicant's prior appearance before this board. For seeker purposes, per planning board council and staff, the proposed action is actually being reclassified as an unlisted action. That's the recommendation, subject to a coordinated review. And so at this time, staff is recommending that the planning board declare its intent to serve as the agency for the environmental review and defer action with comments. Just as also a matter of record, the, the site plan related comments from our traffic engineering consultant and myself and engineering, our, our site civil engineering are fairly minimal at this point. There were also a set of notes that were asked to be placed on the plans. They have been placed on the plans per staff and council request. Language is still, still subject to like final review when we get there. But at this time, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Kristen. Anything remaining, Andy?
No.
Anything for us? Anything, Lisa? All right. Um, go to our, on the board quick for any comments. Peter, anything? Sid?
No comment.
Nope, no comment.
None.
Yep, we'll just, uh, make sure we do, do diligence on this project, so we'll have the motions then.
Okay, so I move that the planning board declare its intent to be the lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent dated May fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to the, to the identified, interested, and involved agencies.
Second.
Moved and seconded to reclassify seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following one to four.
Second.
Moved and seconded to defer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you, everyone. Can I just ask a brief question about those comments to be responded to? I understand, um, that there are a couple of things in the planning department's comments that we do need to answer, but, um, one of the comments is related to architectural review. Is that something that happens when the board is ready to vote on the application overall?
Yes, that's the standard thing that we do after, usually after we grant a, grant a conditional approval, then we, then we go to architectural review. And so in your case, you're really not changing the building much, so...
Sure. Okay, great. And then, um...
And it was acknowledged by your engineer that there were no facade changes. It was just directional signage, which is largely exempt in our town code.
So, so, nothing, nothing...
Nothing, nothing to be done.
I left the comment in there, just as a matter of, you've addressed that there is no facade changes. There are no facade changes.
Okay. And then my only other question related to the comments is you noted that we have to respond to engineering CPL odor comments, and I don't believe that there were any further comments outstanding?
No, um, we, the, our consultant was reviewing materials provided at the last planning board meeting and it's just still under review. So there were no comments to pre-provide it at this point.
Okay, sure. Thank you for the clarification and thank you, everyone, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Coming in. Next up is Mazda at twenty-three and nine South Road, admitting their site plan.
Thank you.
Looks like the project's going pretty well there. Sidewalk's complete and it's starting to look pretty good, yes.
Good evening. Kyle here with the Bella. It's been a little while for me, so I'm happy to be back here in the Town of Kibbe. Gabe Swack also with my office, here representing the applicant. So this is the third amended site plan for Mazda. The purpose of this amended site plan is more from a business operation standpoint. The construction has, has been, you know, they've kept the business open throughout construction, but it has undoubtedly had some, some impacts on their operations and efficiency, efficiencies as far as running their business smoothly. In addition, the construction has taken a little longer than they had originally anticipated. They've, they've had multiple general contractors. So the, um, the plan at, at this time is to get their business operating fully and efficiently. And in order to do that, they've installed this additional overhead door on the south, south elevation here in order to gain access to their service area. And then the, the rear...
You're not sharing your screen if you're, if you think you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, uh, I'm pretty familiar with the project. There are a couple of new board members, so it's probably good to share the screen if you can.
Last time I was here, it just came up. Certainly. Oh, you have to, are you on the Zoom? No, we don't plug in anymore. Are you in the, in the Zoom? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I explain it. So there's a, a door, an overhead door that was installed on the south facade. It is not facing Route nine. It's on essentially behind the new service drop-off area for customers, so it's not visible from the road. We do have a photo of that door we will share with you. But so like I was saying, the, the rear addition will be constructed, but they are proposing to have a twelve to eighteen month delay in its construction to get the business, like I said, operational and kind of getting back to, back to full functionality there on site. There are, um, there's some proposed parking, proposed within the area of the, um, the rear addition in the interim. We did do a calculation for the impervious, so CPL asks for a SWIP addendum. And we can go through those numbers. There's, it's essentially a wash, but we can provide like a memo or something to that effect. I think that's about it. Yeah, so the main thing is the, the door. There is an emergency exit egress door that they did have to provide. So that is temporary, but the overhead door itself will remain permanently, which will also have additional, you know, besides the fact that it'll give them access right now, it will also have some long-term benefits. They'll be able to have more direct access from the customer drop-off area because the south elevation door is, is just past that area instead of going around to the west side of the building. So they'll use that new door as the ingress to the service area and then the west elevation door will be egress.
So the, yeah, the west elevation isn't really changing them at this time?
Correct. It's, the door itself is unchanged. It will be egress only instead of two-way, but as far as, you know, what it looks like from the outside, it will be the same.
Right. That's good, though. Eric?
Sure. Uh, so the, this is, uh, before the board just heard amended site plan hearing, so no seeker is necessary for this. And we're recommending the, yeah, we are recommending the board waive the public hearing and to, and a conditioned, uh, reaffirm prior seeker determination and to grant conditional amended approval. I wasn't clear until yesterday that that, that the doors on that south side that Kyle was talking about were actually proposed to be temporary during the phase and not, and not permanent. So I'm, I'm gonna suggest, recommend, I'm gonna adjust planning comment number one where it says it is now proposed to be permanent. It is not proposed to be permanent.
Change to now to now.
It, it is not proposed to be permanent.
Right.
And then the last sentence, where staff take no exception, I would just change that to they should clarify the temporary phase three A versus the final phase three B conditions on the site plan and the, and on the elevations.
All right.
Uh, because the elevations, it was, I didn't know that from the elevations as presented and on the site plan, it's showing a paved apron to that. And, and so we just wanna see what, how is that gonna be changed with the final?
Yep.
So I don't think it's, would hold things up, but it should just, the other ones that follows. The other comments are pretty hard to clean up. Kyle, there's nothing significant.
Yeah, it's good, good to see they're moving ahead. Showroom came out looking nice. It was a nice way out, huh?
Yeah. Got your eye on that one?
Let's see.
So Kyle, would they, I seen your photo there. Will that pavement curbing be, do you know, is there a plan yet for what we would do with that?
The plan would be, um, the, as far as the pavement goes, I mean, this hasn't been stamped yet, but that will obviously get stamped, um, after approval and then the door will be blocked up with the same material that's, that's there, but the curbing would stay as is. On the other side, there's also the permanent egress door, um, which is within that, that paved area. So it would keep that same width, which just helps a little bit with the turning from ninety degrees from the, the drop-off area there.
But I, I mean, when they, after they build the addition, well, well, because that door, the door in that picture is my understanding is that the, both the overhead door and the person door are gonna go away. So there won't be...
No, the, the overhead door stays, the, this door goes away.
All right, then I'm gonna ask that you clarify that because that's not what Chris told me yesterday.
Okay, that's, that's what he...
What's that?
Yeah, we can clarify that, but yeah, the...
Yeah, because he, he actually sent you an email with it marked up, redlined out.
Yeah, so when I was...
I, I, I don't think if the board is okay with it either way, we could just resolve it as...
Yeah. Be a condition to clarify to resolve which way it goes. That's, that's included in comments of the... All right, thanks, Eric. Anything, Andy?
Yeah, we really don't have a whole lot on this. Mostly some comments on the temporary parking area, you know, signage that's only gonna be employee only. Um, you know, a few, you know, some tweaks maybe with the grading, just a little bit more information. Um, and, you know, making sure that areas that are compacted as a result of the temporary parking area are decompacted so that, you know, grass, soil, water infiltrates well. But otherwise, you know, we don't really have any major concerns with...
All right. So drainage is looking good, thanks. All right, let's, uh, go around the board for comments. Well, first out, I'll just make the motion that the planning board waive the public hearing in accordance with town code two ten, one fifty-one, sub D.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's go around for comments. Peter? Sid?
No comment.
None.
That's for me, other, other than the project's looking good, as I said, and, uh, wish you well.
Appreciate that.
Eventually get into your service phase, extra service phase.
Thank you, thank you. We're all in for you.
So I move that the planning board waive the site...
Okay, I did that.
Oh, so we're gonna go to what B?
Yeah.
I move that the planning board... I move that the planning board find that the Mazda expansion amended site plan involves incremental changes to the project of negligible magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous Seeker negative declaration adopted September 19, 2019, and has reaffirmed for amended site plans through March 21, 2024, as modified by the proposed Route 9 Mazda amended site plan application dated and received on April 21, 2025 with related plans and materials.
Second.
Moved and seconded for Seeker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan review approval subject to the following 1 to 8.
And that include, and 8 including the, uh, comment we just said to clarify the door.
Also Arlington Fire District number 7, they submitted late comments on May 5th.
May 5th.
Subject to their comments on May 5th.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We should, uh, conduct an architectural review now, uh, you have anything else to show? Yep, there we go.
The current and future zoom in.
But there we go. So that's the temporary door we were talking about there?
Yeah, so it looks almost metallic here, but the picture shows, um, it's, it's mostly glass and has some metal slats kind of in the hinges of that door, um, so, yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna also just suggest that, um, the condition be to revise the, uh, elevations for architecture as, as may be required, uh, because we're not sure if that door is gonna remain final. And one of those doors is, is definitely going away, the other one, we're not sure. So it's just that you, but just be consistent-
So we'll do it.
With the site plan.
Yep.
So you're looking for the elevation to match the permanent condition?
Yeah. Well, or just to indicate the phasing, because that was the purpose of this site plan sub D was to show, that was the intent-
Which one, permanent versus temporary?
Phase 3A, temporary, and then the final.
Sure.
Phase 3B.
Okay.
All right, um, do you have anything showing the west elevation, or that, it wasn't changing, you said?
Yeah, there's only changes to the south, um, there's the east, just because it happened to be on the same sheet, but-
Yep. Yeah, that's the, the, the previous one, so the only real change is that one in the back there, and then the parking, uh, paving.
Correct.
All right, um, does that have to be conditional then, Eric, what you were asking for?
That, that would do it, yeah, to make it, uh, conditional, subject to the revised south elevation, clar- revised south elevation to clarify Phase 3A versus Phase 3B, final conditions.
All right, I move we accept architecture as presented, conditioned on the, providing the revised elevation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Good to go.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back in, and good luck with the project. Next up, we have a couple time extensions for Corwood Ventures offices, I move the planning board grant 190 day time extension for the Corwood Ventures offices, moving the current approval expiration date from June 19, 2025 to September 17, 2025.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Next up, we have a time extension for 76 Ireland Drive Dish Wireless, I move the planning board grant a 90 day time extension of the approved site plan two-year construction completion date from June 15, 2025 forward to September 13, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Does anyone wish to bring in any other business to the board? Should we hang out here then?
This is for record.
Seeing that, I move we end the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Good to go. Okay, have a good night, everyone, thanks, Lisa.
For record, huh?
Lisa. Take care.
Yeah.